Presti day with you, honors with prayer.
Good morning, Father. We thank you for this day, with many blessings and laughs that you give to us so abundant. Thank you in honor to take this for granted. Father, we pray that it's beautiful today as it was here. It's been a tough place in Arkansas and Mississippi, as that you can be with those that have lost loved ones that have been hurt. Would you comfort them and may they know that you were close by? As Father, as we go about tonight's business of the college, the Father that you can give us wisdom far beyond what we would ever possess. And we make the right decisions that would honor you, would honor those who we represent. Of course, your son's name we would ask.
This time we'll consider public comments.
Yeah, anywhere. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kenyon Williams. I'm a member of the men's basketball team here at Trinity Valley. And I just wanted to kind of come up here and bring back to the coaching changes lately. We've all been notified and we understand that we feel like we want to go in a different direction, whatever, with the leadership of the team. And me and a few of my teammates here, we just came because we wanted to show our support and we wanted to really see if we could have a save or like at least know a little bit more into who might be up next for us and what this means for our future and how we can go on about our lives, whether or not we can, you know, stay here and grow it, not only on the basketball court, but like I admitted. And with Coach Leslie leaving, it was a little unexpected for us. We felt a little disrespectful, but we do also understand that sometimes that this is a business and change is needed. We just wanted to come here and show our faces so you all could see that we actually care and we wanted to be a part of the process.
Good. Thank you.
Is anybody else here to speak? Thank you for that. This time we'll go to the president's report.
I have a few things I'd like to tell you about. I think you probably already know about a lot of it already. But you have a, I have provided some information for you here as well. We're going to have the Ray Raymond retirement reception at our next board meeting, which is April the 24th at 5:00. I talked to Ray today and talked to Ann today, and they were happy to go ahead and put that back on the calendar. And so it will be next board meeting, April 24th at 5:00. Want to talk a little bit about the TBCC cheer team. They're competing in the NCA and NDA college national finals this week, April the 7th through the night in Florida. Our cheer team coaches, Vontae Johnson and Chris Franklin, will lead their team to compete for its 14th national championship as a defending national champion. So we'll all be cheering them on. I think there was more information that was posted today specifically about the time and the day that they'll be competing. Hopefully, we'll all be able to watch that. The TBCC cardette show team will also be performing at the national competition next, this next week, weekend in Orlando, Florida. The Cardinal Showgirls earned a national championship last year in 2022 and in the open palm division. And they'll be again competing in Orlando, Florida, and they'll also be on television. So we'll be hopefully able to watch them as well. And wish them well, both of them in their, in their future competition for the national championship. The Lady Cardinal Basketball Team, I want to mention them. They did great in Lubbock. They went three rounds into the national tournament, played in the national tournament. Last Monday, they came up short. They got beat 66 to 63 in overtime. And they lost three games this year. They were, they ended up being 34 and 3, and all three games they lost were overtime games. So that was a pretty good season, pretty good year. And they had a great, great year and a great run at it. This was their eighth NJCAA runner-up finish in program history, and they've won eight national championships. And I think I've told you guys many times before over the years, they are a legend and they, they're well-known around the country in terms of their basketball team and in terms of what they do off the court and on the court. Our Cardinal Men's Basketball Team also did well. They had a great run in the regional tournament. They won the regional tournament. It was a great game. They played great. It was over at Tyler Junior College. Unfortunately, they lost in the first round in Salina, Kansas, but they did make it to Nationals, and that doesn't happen that often. So we're very proud of them as well. The TBCC rodeo is coming up this next couple of weeks. I wanted to mention that to you. If you want to go see a good rodeo, come to the TBCC rodeo. It'll be on a Friday and Saturday night on April the 21st to 22nd at the Henderson County Fair Complex and starts at 7:30. It's usually over with by 10:00 or close to it. It'll be good. And the rodeo team's been doing great as well. This last weekend, I think they were Hillsborough at the Hill College rodeo and they've been doing very good. And I anticipate them having two or three of their rodeo team members going to Nationals as well. They did last year, the last couple of weeks. One of the things I'm very proud of and I want to mention is that we have, as of right now, this probably will change. We have 807 graduates for the May graduation. We've never had that many graduates before. The previous record for number of graduates was in 2021. And those of you that were here for that graduation ceremony, you know, it went on and on and on and on. Well, this one's going to go on and on and on and on. We had 713 graduates previously was our record. So now we have 807. Now, they may not all make it. They're still checking grades and you're still doing a few things like that. So it may drop off a little bit, but still going to be a record graduation. And obviously, that's very something that we should be very proud of. It's something that is very important at TBCC to have graduates. Moving on. I want to mention esports. I don't know anything about esports, but I keep reading and James Jones keeps telling me about it. And he keeps telling me that we're going to the playoffs. So we're going to the playoffs in esports and they compete every week. And believe me, they work hard and they compete hard. And we've got people that are doing esports as well as other, other activities on campus. As a matter of fact, I think we had a soccer player that was also on the esports team. So it's, it's really gotten to be something very, very big for us and we're probably in the near future, next year or two or three, going to outgrow the facility that we're in now, that originally started with that. Also want to mention that and give accolades to some of the other programs. Student Senate, I think you, they've won the region and they're going to state in a couple of weeks, I think, to compete in state competition. They do that every year. They're good every year and they're good again this year. The theater, theater department also won some awards a couple of weeks ago, and they've got a play coming up. I think it's week after next. I'll keep you posted on that. It will be good. It's always good. Pata Kappa has won some awards and they've, they actually won some state level and some national level awards. Beat Cattle Show Team has been doing good. I think Mark Robinson is, is finished with that for the year, but they've been doing good. And they've received several awards and recognition. And the last thing I want to mention, and I've talked about this a little bit before, but we're still in the phase of trying to determine exactly what the new legislative, legislative session is going to do with their new model funding. But the first go-round I sent out to you a couple of weeks ago, looks really good for TBCC. The first go-round, we got a 17, 17.5% increase on the last May. Now, whether it's going to hold up or not, actually, I think it's going to increase, but that's just me talking. We won't know probably for a couple of weeks, maybe even three or four weeks into mid-May, possibly exactly what the impact's going to be. But it looks like the new funding model is going to do what I had hoped that it would do and thought it would do. It's really going to benefit TBCC primarily because of our number of graduates and our number of completers and our success model that we have and have had here at TBCC. It's going to really do, do good things for us. Don't hold us to that yet because there's still a lot out there, but there's a good possibility that we're going to really get some good positive rewards. And I think we really appreciate the fact that the board approved and signed a letter of, kind of proclamation of support for that because I think it's going to really help the college. And that's all I have unless somebody else has something else they'd like to ask. Yeah, Coach Wayne, that's a good. I was there at the game Saturday. They had double hitter. I think we've won the last seven games in a row. Does that sound right? Seven or eight games in a row? But Coach Wayne Rowland won her 750th game last Saturday. And she's, the softball team has really got momentum going. They play Wednesday, I believe, is at Paris. With Paris has got a good team. They beat us earlier this year. And then they play Saturday here, and I'm not sure. That may be Boss or Parish. No, I'm sorry. They don't play here. They play at Boss. But their season will wind up in a couple of weeks and they have their regional tournament, which is a big deal for us. And hopefully we'll do well at that and be able to go to Nationals, the regional tournaments at Boss Parish. Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Yes?
The, and you had already covered this, but the girls' basketball team was televised.
Yeah.
And guy and girl that was announcing the game, even though we lost the game, I think there was a lot of positive came out of that game because of the broadcast. So if anybody that was out there on the free end, not knowing, thinking about Trinity Valley, I thought that those guys did a great job to get those guys over the, on the other side.
The only bad part of that, I think they kept showing me. I kept getting texts from people saying, yeah, I see you. I see you. But I heard the same thing. I thought a great public relations force. I had people contact, text me that didn't even know where Trinity Valley Community College was. I had some people that I went to high school with and college with that had mentioned something about seeing us.
Yeah.
And they just were flipping through the channels and saw it on ESPN. So I think we got a really lot of good.
They did a lot of great research to bring out some of the things that they was talking about.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying. It was a great game. I hated that we lost.
Yeah.
But it was a great game. That six foot five girl that they had, she made a three-pointer with about seven seconds left in the game. Only three-pointer she shot all night, but she made it.
We did beat them here.
We beat them here. Yeah.
We beat them once.
Yeah. Anyways, it was a great, it was good for TBCC. That's for sure. That's why. Thank you for saying that.
At this time, we'll consider the minutes of March 6th to 2023 meeting. You all were sent a copy of them. Do I hear any discussion, changes or approval of saying? We're hearing motion to approve. And Dr. Easton made a motion and Mr. Sloan seconded. All in favor? Same side. Motion passes. January financials.
We're just briefly on January, not a lot of changes. And we're running still 2% above last year on tuition fees. 10.1 in January, 10.2 in February. We should encompass most of the spring. And that sounds like a brokerator, but housing and food service, food store still up. Food service already exceeded budget. The only other thing I did want to put out revenue is I did want to tell the board it's not in these finances, but I did draw down the last of the HIRF money. I think we talked about this in budget committee. We had kind of earmarked that for the loss in contact hour funding that we experienced this year. The grant is over in June. I wanted to go ahead and get that done and make sure we didn't have any issues with it. So that will be shown up on the board's financials. payroll's running about where we expected with the changes that we made in budget. Cost of living and the salary study things that we did. The only thing on M and O I wanted to point out. You see scholarships are $350,000 of last year. That was budgeted. There were increases in scholarships as outlined in the budget books. It's still, where we stand today is below that increase by over $100,000. So we're doing pretty good there in the year. Also, as of January, we're at $16.24 million revenue over expense versus 15.9 last year tragic re-plugues. Is there any questions about any of that? On the cash, oh, I did want to point out also, you notice on our property taxes did get straightened out. We're up to 20, 21 billion against the budget before as of February. A lot of folks paid in February this year, not July. Cash, as usual, this time of year with the property taxes coming in, that's in fine shape. Investment reports, 23 million still in capital reserve. Next month, you will see, I believe it was an additional six that we put in after the audit. It was shown, I believe, in February. The cap reserve statement, we have just one expense there for $9,850 for Rock West Door. And last but not least, the over $25,000. I know most of y'all already listened to this, but I wanted to give you a chance to ask any question if you might have. And as we talked about, I think that's all I got.
Any questions for Mr. Hopkins? We're motion to accept the financial reports. Stone makes the motion. Day seconds it. Thank you. Discuss Kaufman County Research Connection request for office space through TBCC Kaufman Center.
Board, you may remember, we talked about this. It's probably been three, four months ago. Pam, Pam Porter, would you, there you go. Pam was here. And I think you had Susan with you back then, Susan Huffman. But at that time, I think they were in the process of going and becoming a nonprofit organization, which they have done. And again, it's called the Kaufman County Resource Connection. And what we talked about, when was that? Was it January? Was it December? However, long ago it was. I think it was January. When we talked about that before, we discussed the possibility of, of having a, an opportunity for them to utilize on the second floor of the building, the educational building there in Kaufman, the office area that we have. And there's 10 offices, I believe, up there, nine or 10 offices up there, nine, I think. And there's another kind of a break room up there as well. And what we were hoping to be able to do is work with them. As you know, from our previous discussion, the hospital owns the facility. We, we have a 50-year lease with them. So we actually don't own it. They do. So we've worked with them as well, and they are very interested in us developing this relationship and this opportunity for the Kaufman County Resource Connection to be able to utilize our, our facility on the second floor. We don't anticipate, as I mentioned before, having any need for this space in the near future. Again, it's offices. Those were offices that were used by the nursing program when they were there. Up until three years ago, they moved over to Terrell. The whole purpose of this is for the nonprofit organizations to have a one location, one stop location there in Kaufman County for them to be able to, a person that has a need or has need some help, like can go to this location and they can get what they need without going from one, one location in Kaufman to another one, in Terrell to another one located even outside the Kaufman County area. We believe this is a great opportunity for TBCC to become a good partner in, for people of Kaufman County and Kaufman specifically. We are working now with Lee Futter and I think your attorney's, their attorney's name is Ed Farwell. He, they are working together to try to, to develop a proposal because we don't own the facility and because the hospital owns the facility to work out the details of how that would work. In addition, we are trying to determine what kind of cost calculation there could be involved with this. What we talked about before was the fact that the second floor space is about 2,500 square foot of the facility, the overall facility, which is about 17% of the overall facility. And that if you calculated the, the janitorial service cost and some of the utility costs and some of the other costs, then we could come up with an amount that we could, we could work with where they would pay for a portion of the property that they're utilizing. Again, I just say this is, I believe it's a great opportunity for all of us. I think it's especially a great opportunity for us to, to work with Kaufman and Kaufman County. Quite frankly, since we moved out of the health, the old Health Science Center in Kaufman, we haven't been able to get a lot of traction. We've worked, we're working at it and we've got people there, but we have not been able to get the traction that we'd like to get in terms of getting people involved and coming in to the facility and utilizing facility. We believe this will help us with that traction as well. And as I mentioned earlier, the hospital wants us to do this. The hospital is encouraging us to do this because they believe that when they have patients in the hospital that leave, that they can come to this facility and get help or get assistance if they need it. And we can be a partnership with them as well. I have, I don't know how many Pam sent me, but I gave you a copy of all these. These are the, the letter, the recommendations, the positive support that they, they have already gotten. Got this in the last couple of weeks. I met with them last week or week before last. They got all these in that period of time. I think that the county court, county is, the county judge is very much interested in us working with them on this and others in the county as well. So I believe it would bring, it would bring positive recognition to the college to be able to, to work, work with them in some capacity in this way. Tonight, we're not, we're not, we're not wanting to make any vote or we're not wanting to do anything because we don't really have the proposal ready. But what we wanted to do was just kind of get you warmed up, kind of get you thinking about it again. And then hopefully we can come back on April the 24th and we can have a proposal. We can give it to you in advance. You can look at it. We can have it approved by Lee, have it approved, approved by their attorney at the hospital. And, and then we can, we can talk about it in more detail at that time, in more specifics at that time. I think Pam's already got people lined up to utilize this facility. She gave me a whole long, I didn't, I didn't make copies of this for you, but these were people that want to be in the facility. These are all good people, good organizations that do good for the, for the, for the county. And so I, I just can't say enough about how positive that I think this would, would be for the college. I know there's details to work out, but is it, does anybody have any questions? I really can't answer any details, but any questions in general? Pam's here. Pam, would you like to just say something? Or have I said it all?
You said a lot of them. And I have more, more of the support letters that have been coming in. This is something that's really needed in our community. I was on a virtual call or with a meeting with the state about mental health. And I was explaining to them what our hopes are. And they said, oh my goodness, that's a wonderful idea. Hopefully this could be something that other counties could, you know, follow student. So, so it is, and it's needed and it's going to adly grow. We're going to need it more and more.
Thank you, Pam. I think I saw something in the Athens Review last week about a Henderson County Coalition of Nonprofits. Well, I think they're trying to do the same thing here in Henderson County.
To work with other communities and others that kind of are to be a part of what we're doing so they can see how we're doing things.
Yeah. Thank you, Pam. And hopefully, if anyone has any questions or would like to see the facility, we'd be happy to show you the facility and what we're talking about. But again, it's not anything that we're going to use, in my opinion, in the near future at some point. In the future, they may want to completely take all those offices out and use it for something else, but I don't see that happening in the, in the near future. Anybody have any questions about that? And we'll, we'll get into more detail hopefully at the April 24th. Lee's working on it right now. That's all. Thank you, Pam. Thank you.
Next item of business is consider and discuss the TBCC Palestine Workforce Center and TBCC Palestine Campus and Future TVCJ Regional Training Center.
Okay, we have several people that have been working on this. Chris, I see you in the background there. Chris Trahan is the Palestine Economic Development Corporation Executive Director. Good to see you here. I think he was at our last meeting. We discussed the $1.25 million opportunity that we have moving forward with him in Palestine in some direction. We also have Corey, for interest with us, Corey, appreciate you coming. Corey is a, one of our, one of local engineers here, also a graduate of TBCC, by the way. But a local engineer and he's been helping us come up with numbers and helping us come up with ideas about, you know, trying to make the decision between what our options may be for a Palestinian Texas Department of Criminal Justice Training Center. There's been several people working on this. We actually started working on this, Chris, probably back in the early fall. And so initially, we talked about going to Palestine campus, and then we talked about as an, as an option. And then secondly, we talked about coming and going later on to the possibility of the Palestine Workforce Center. I want to mention Drake. Drake, raise your hand. Drake's very much been involved in this as well. And Sam Purley's been involved in this. Chris has been involved in this. Tony Bupur's been involved in this. This has been a joint effort, believe me, of trying to come up with these options that, that I would like for you to look at and know. So basically, what it boils down to is we have two options. Our, our lease and our current Palestine Workforce Center is up January 1st of 2025, and we've known that all along. And so we, we have been, as I mentioned, talking for the last eight or nine months about what our options may be to be able to move forward with continuing our, our in-service program and our pre-service program that we are currently doing at the facility. We have two options here that I'd like to discuss and you ask, you can ask questions and hopefully we got the people here tonight that can help answer those questions. But what it boils down to is two, two options. We got the option of the Palestine campus. And we have gone through and done our, what we consider to be our due diligence of what it would take to renovate the facility, what it would take to, to build a 20,000 square foot facility, what it would take to have an exit and entrance off of Highway 19, the parking lot completely redone, which that's going to have to be done anyways at some point in time in the future. What it would take to renovate the facility, the campus itself, to be able to offer the, the classes there, in-service, pre-service, but also offer the officer training. And officer training is something I want to spend just a minute talking about because that's the big deal. That's something that we're, we're just in the infancy of starting to do now. The officer training is going to bring in hundreds, potentially thousands of officers, of TDC officers around the state of Texas to Palestine to be able to do training for maybe two-day training, three-day training, four-day training. I don't know what length of time. It may vary. But that is, I think, Chris, especially what the EDC is interested in, is the officer training because it's something that's going to be putting people in hotels and restaurants and things of that nature. So that's very important for us as well. Overall, looking at the Palestine campus, we're looking at somewhere around $7.2 million. That's, that's an estimate. Again, Corey has helped us with that. I have given you a construction cost estimate sheet. You can go down through that sheet and you can see the, the estimated cost. I believe that's, that's, that's a good, that's a good number. I don't think it will be any more than that to do what we need to do. I do believe it could be less than that, but that's a good number for you to, to look at. The second option, and I also in your, in your information here, provided you a schematic of what the 20,000 square foot facility would look like. It could be located in a number of locations. There's three locations that I provided for you. One of those would be behind. One of those would be, uh, behind the, the main part of the campus there. There's a big hill back there. If you've been back there, thank you, Norma, you can see it behind the, the main building. That's one location, um, proposed building location. Another one would be option two over to, to the left-hand side of your screen. That's beside the current Calhoun Building. And the other one would be to, to the far right of your screen, which is beside the parking lot, uh, to the right of the, uh, current entrance to the property. I, I don't know which one of those locations is going to be the best. I don't, I don't think tonight, at least that's, that's what we're trying to make any decision. It's just the three locations that we looked at. Um, we're go- the, but the, the, the cost of the overall renovation is going to be somewhere around seven point two million dollars. Um. Now, the, the, let's talk about the cost for the, uh, purchasing the Palestinian Workforce Center. And there's going to be some major changes that's going to take place there. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Chris. But the current front of the building will no longer be the front of the building. It'll be the back of the building. Correct?
In the case of the TBCC Workforce Center, yes.
Right, okay.
The, uh, most of the retail clients that are being recruited to that space will still be front-facing. The common space, the mall areas, eliminated all from the square foot.
So I, as far as our facility is concerned, it would be the, the back of the, of the, where we are is now would be the, would be the back at the back of our facility where the parking is in the backside. I guess that would be on the south side of the facility would then be, um, the front. So they're talking about completely changing it up. The, the overall estimated cost of, um, you're looking at the pot- potential of a, of a new roof. You're looking at the potential of, um, of, uh, uh, lighting change, electrical changes, fire alarm system, um, roof, uh, parking lot. Uh, yeah, HVAC. I have an old list of things here that we, we, we looked at. We've hired, um, consultants to go in and evaluate the cost of replacing them. And those are going to have to be replaced, maybe not immediately, but in the near future, according to the evaluation that was done. If you look at your handout on EMA, what says EMA, on, on, I guess that it's not numbered, but about the middle of it, it gives their recommendations and estimated costs for, for what we're talking about. If you add them all up, talk about a new parking lot. You're talking about some interior changes. You're talking about these potential costs. You're talking about the, changing the front from the back and the back from the front entrance. Uh, you're, you're talking about, now we're only talking about again, the, where we're located on, on the Palestinian Workforce Center, not the library. You're talking about somewhere around five million dollars. Five million dollars. Now, would that be, uh, and, and again, I, I don't think that's probably, I think that would increase. We're talking about a building that's a forty-year-old building. And that one said forty years old, about forty-year-old, forty-year-old building. So these are the costs that we know that we probably will have in the near future if we purchase the building. There's going to be some additional costs. I, I don't know what they are. I don't, you know, I don't know, but, but anytime you're getting a forty-year-old building, there's going to be some additional cost. Um, this is not including the library. The library would be an, an additional cost uh, if that's something that we wanted to move forward with. Um, they're, they're wanting to, us to have the library as well. I would love, if, if we decided that we would have this facility, uh, that's okay. If we decided that we would take this facility in ownership, then, um, I would like to ha- would think that we would put a couple vocational workforce programs uh, where the library, that's going to be an additional cost above the five million. Don't know what it would be because it would depend on what the workforce programs that we put in there. One other thing I want to mention is I found mold in the library a couple of weeks ago. Maybe a month or so ago. And I gave you a, a handout, talks about library mold cleanup to cost a hundred thousand dollars. When we found this out, we, uh, asked for someone, uh, and a consultant to go and, um, and look at our, our facility, the Palestinian Workforce Center. They did that last week, didn't they? Um, yeah, Tony, was it last week? We haven't got the results back from that yet.
No, they're expecting this week, but we haven't gotten it.
So is there a potential for mold? Yeah. We don't know if there's mold there or not. We hope there's not. But we, we have people in that facility that's using it right now. So we need to know whether there, there is or if there isn't. And if there isn't mold there, then we need to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to prevent that from happening, uh, between now and January first of twenty twenty-five. So again, just looking at it from a summary view, we're looking at renovating the Palestinian campus. It would cost seven, uh, in the ballpark of seven million, two hundred thousand. Or the option would be to purchase the Palestinian, uh, Workforce Center, uh, and it would be in the ballpark of five million dollars. What have I left off here, Corey?
We've covered a lot of things. We spent a lot of hours.
Dre, what, what did I, what did I leave off?
I think you covered everything.
No, I couldn't have covered everything. It's not possible.
You got it.
Yeah.
You got it.
Yeah. Uh, the, these guys have done a tremendous amount of work, uh, for us, trying to come up with these numbers. These numbers are not exact. Um, but they're, but they're, but they're pretty close. We did do our due diligence. Uh, I also gave you a time, timeline in your package. Um, and Corey basically gave me this timeline. If we decided that we were going to renovate the Palestinian campus and we need to get that done between now and January first of twenty twenty-five, we need to start pretty quickly. We need to have some, some of the work done, um, possibly by August, uh, this August. So, um, you know, if that's the decision that you decide to go tonight, then we need to start working on that in the pretty near future and going forward with it. One thing I did leave off is the owner of the, of the mall facility. His name is John Christian. And we've met with him multiple times. I know Chris is meeting with him on a regular basis. Uh, we, we met with him about two months ago and he was good enough to give us two months. Because he wanted an answer then, in terms of whether we wanted, wanted to purchase the, the Palestinian Workforce Center or not. And he was good enough to say, okay, I, I basically said, we can't, we can't tell you anything until I've done my due diligence and I've talked to our board about it. And our board understands what the options are here and then we can do that. So really the purpose tonight is to make a decision whether to go with the Palestinian campus renovation or to go with the purchase of the Palestinian Workforce Center and the library. And I need, we need to be able to tell him something. Tomorrow.
I'll be speaking with him tomorrow.
Yeah. Uh, he's waiting on, he's been waiting on us to make this decision and I appreciate that. Actually, he's been good to work, he's been working with us very well over the last six months, nine months, be able to move forward with it. So I'm, they're all here. I'm here to answer any questions that anybody may have. And I know Steve and, has been there. And he, he's probably got an opinion on what we should do. And I know Mike has been there and they've been into both facilities. And they have looked and of course I've been in there many, many times. And so y'all have some inputs?
Do you mind talking about the advantages as you see it for the on-campus versus, and the advantages on the, on the other side?
Yeah, the advantages for the on-campus is that it's going to renov- that campus was built in nineteen seventy-five. I was there for the opening of that campus in August of nineteen seventy-five. So it was built in seventy-four probably. So it's, it needs some major renovation anyways. It needs some major work done anyways. But what this will do is this will fill up the parking lot with people there on the campus. If we're, if we, if we go, decide to go that route. It will bring vitality back to the campus. It will bring energy back to the campus. It will bring Palestine back to the campus. We'll continue doing and offering of workforce classes and continue offering academic classes just like we always have. But this will, this will be the place to be uh, in Palestine in terms of educational opportunities. Let me just also say, we have really got a great partnership with Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Sam Hurley has worked that relationship for, for twenty years, twenty-five years. It's a great relationship. They are all in on this project as well. They want us to do this. They want us to do one or the other. They want us to continue doing in-service. They want us to continue doing the pre-service and they want us to add officer training. They want us to be as big in terms of, of TDCJ training as Huntsville. Matter of fact, I think they want to move some of their operations from Huntsville to us. And so they're all in as well. They, they want us to be a partner with them in all of these areas. And this officer training is going to be a big deal. I wish I could tell you more about it. I know Kelly Towns has been working with them on it. We've been doing some things with it. But it's going to be a big deal and they're bringing in people from not just our region, from all of the state. Like they were in Huntsville previous. Yeah. The, the disadvantage, uh, i- is cost. It costs more for, for there, but again, the, the advantage to the, um, to the Palestinian Workforce Center would be that it, it costs less. It would be our facility. The disadvantage obviously is, i- it's, it's own. And it's going to cut, it's going to take a lot of money to keep it operating and keep it going, I'm afraid, in the future. So, that's a good.
And, and we're, we're purchasing, uh, several thousand, I think, workforce.
You mean in the Palestinian campus? Yeah, we're moving the LBN program over to the Palestinian campus. We, we're going to do that anyways. And we, we are, we're doing that. We're renovating right now, the process of renovating right now for that to happen. So that would be moving over there. Plus, we're, I think we're probably going to be moving the EMT program, right Dre? The EMT program is going to be moving to the Palestinian campus or there will be an EMT program again on the Palestinian campus?
Uh, we are hoping so.
Okay, we, we're, we're talking about that as a possibility. Uh, it was there before and we moved it to Ca- we moved it to Terre when we opened the Health Science Center. We think we need to go back and have a program as, in Palestine as well. So there's some other workforce opportunities to do on our, on our Palestinian campus, uh, if that's something that you, you choose to do. Yeah, I, again, uh, Chris, I can't thank you enough. We all want to thank you for the opportunities that we have to work with you. Chris is, Chris has done something that no other economic development Executive Director of Palestine in the years that I've been here has been able to do. And this will work with us in this capacity. And we've, but, believe me, we've asked before. And, and it just didn't work out, but he, he, he has done a lot. His board has done a lot. Ben Camel is the president of his board. Ben Camel is the one who's worked with us all along on this, as well as some of his other board members. And I believe the city of, uh, the city of the, the mayor and the, the Palestinian, uh, City of Palestine, uh, City Council is behind this. And, and I think you talked to the county judge a couple of times and the county, some of the commissioners and they're on board. That's not an easy thing to do. Believe me, I've talked to them several times over the years. And just to have them on board. So we've got a bunch of people in Palestine on board here. And in my opinion, this is a great opportunity. This is, this is just similar, very similar to the Health Science Center in, in Terre. This can be a big deal for TBCC and could be a big deal for City of Palestine and, and, and for, for all of us. So I see a year from now or two years from now, or three years from now, whatever the case may be, this being, uh, a, a great opportunity for us to, to do more with Palestine and TDCJ. And also this is a major revenue figure. That in-service program and pre-service program, I've given you the figures on that. Generates eight or nine hundred thousand dollars a year, every year. Not, not generates net income, eight or nine hundred thousand. I'm anticipating the officer training program. Again, I'm stepping out on a limb here, but I'm, I'm anticipating a four, five, four or five hundred thousand dollar increase. And again, you got to remember that we're, we're not paying for the faculty. We're not paying for any of this. All we're doing is furnishing the facility and, and some of the supplies, I guess, along the way. So this is a great partnership that we have in terms of, uh, revenue generating, uh, with Texas Department of Criminal Justice. And I also believe, I'll just keep adding to this, I also believe that the new funding formula, this is going to be a benefit to the new formula funding as well. Because this type of professional development training will count for, uh, for as a part of the formula funding. So this is going to be a winner for us. Okay, I'll stop.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Man, just for.
Absolutely, please.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you again. Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you all for taking the time to look at this really important project. As Dr. King wisely pointed out, you know, from the EDC's perspective, yes, this represents a boon for our economy. But I have to say, I'm really proud of my EDC board, of my city council and of our county commissioners board and recognizing really in the macro sense what this project means for workforce development for Anderson County. We, we want this project with TDCJ to be successful, TBCC, so that we can find future opportunities to partner with TBCC in continuing to build out vocational programs. EMT would be tremendous. We want to harness a lot of the residual economic growth coming off of the City of Tyler with its, uh, oncoming medical school. So expanding healthcare training programs and partnering with TBCC, we want to explore all these options. In, in putting them all in front of you, we wanted to give you an option that was turnkey, something we'd be looked at immediately, immediately look at getting that revenue generated for you from the state so that we can continue to work with you. We want to see the TBCC campus grow as well. And we very much, I have to say, I've heard sentiment from my board members, from my city council. We want to see that parking lot full very much as well. Uh, we have a lot of pride in the City of Palestine for Trinity Valley Community College and we're, we're very lucky to have you guys as a partner to work with because we recognize that workforce is a key element in site selection and in recruiting new business to grow in our economy. So, thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you, Corey.
I have a question. Uh, first a statement, then a question to Corey. Uh, first my statement is I'm totally for this project on campus. Uh, we've been on Palestinian campus many times. Uh, it is a low-functioning campus. This would completely revitalize that campus and bring it back to life, one hundred percent, and it'll do it immediately. Uh, Corey, to you, uh, looking at these plans, you know, a twenty thousand square foot building, looks like there's about four thousand square feet of break room, storage, men and women's bathrooms. And then two open air, about eight thousand square feet pieces on each side of this, a gym and a multipurpose center. So it looks like it's all open air, open, open space. Uh, at twenty thousand square feet, seven million plus, that's about three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. That just seems very high. Can you tell us or share with us what's driving that cost of three fifty?
So, there's a lot of different factors. Dr. King, can I?
Yeah, sure, yeah, please do.
So, if you've ever been to Palestinian campus, you understand that it's built on the side of the hill. And so it's the three options that were presented are all on the side of the hill as well. It's the only building area that you have that is also adjacent to where Calhoun Building was, besides the one up near the road. And so to address that, yes, your cost is going to increase dramatically. There's so much dirt to move, there's so much civil construction cost and all that on top of the parking lot. But then you have a whole nother problem with your access. And Dr. King and Tony and I have discussed this issue really in depth. You have one access that navigates practically around the main campus building. So if you're going to increase your student population, you're going to have a problem with bringing all that traffic around that main building. And so you're looking at a significant cost to get an access road. Because that's going to, you're going to have, when you do something, you always have a reaction, everybody's asking. You're getting a lot of people, but you haven't addressed the traffic. And that is a major driving force of that too. There's also a major cost in a fire suppression system once you get about twelve thousand square feet too. You're looking at very, very expensive on that. The other issue that also is your rural water supply can't supply you firefly, long time keep. I know because I worked with them also. So to satisfy that, you have to have a storage facility that will store that fire suppression as well. So that goes along with the cost of it. There's, there's a lot of things that go into this. And it's, it's really actually a complex civil engineering construction and just building the building. Actually, it's building part of it. It's really not that hard. And I agree with you, it's a lot of air, open air space. And then you have all these other factors.
But the building by itself was only three million. The, only, that's three millions a lot of money. But it was a hundred and fifty dollars.
There you go.
A hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Corey, does that, those slabs have to be, it's of the slope, that'd be professionally engineered?
Yes, it will be. You want your slopes to be stable, not only what your, your building is going to be built on, but everything behind you as well. Obviously positive training is important back too. They actually took the best building side and made it your main case.
Any significant difference between option one and two?
Uh, a couple hundred thousand, I believe. The slopes are still pretty steep. Option one has a steeper slope, more cost. Uh, they're both really in the vicinity of the Calhoun Building. Uh, they're both really in the vicinity of the Calhoun building and I don't know if it matters on what side of Calhoun building to see the lieutenant is going to be. I don't know that question. They're both really close. I personally, I don't see a difference. Uh, there's no pedestrian issues, traversing between each one, we can handle all that. Option two is cheaper. Why you wouldn't consider that unless they just want it right there.
I know you've seen both the facilities. What are your thoughts?
Well, my my personal thought is, I mean, I'll I'll say the the obvious that the you know, it's a little bit more than a year payback on what we're spending on the mall, which is a good thing. It's about a ten-year payback or a little less doing the new campus, but I feel like over there at the mall, it's it's a little more, you you you've got neighbors and uh you know, it's a it's a shared facility in a way, even though we don't this. Here, it does do everything you you said about the campus, it revitalizes it. We have, if you're going to get a tenant, there's probably nothing better than the Department of Criminal Justice, I think, because they've been with us. We have a his, a track history with the criminal, Texas Department of Criminal Justice in meeting with the major um.
Vander, Vander, Vander to.
He expressed very much happiness with us being there and wanting to bring more stuff to Palestine, as Dr. King said. I mean, not, I I'd like to thank Dre's efforts on this too. I mean, he's done a lot working with the he and the city and the Economic Development Group to make this happen. But I think the campus side is by far the best side.
You do have the option also with either one or two. If you want to expand, you can expand. You have plenty of space, I believe. That's an option as well. If you do, if you do have some space, you're not bought by any means. It's just there. It doesn't cost money, but you do have that option. You're not being.
It's, in your opinion, is there a lot of deferred maintenance as part of this?
There would be with the with the Palestinian workforce center, but with the other. Yeah, we we've given this a lot of thought and I I've been over there with Steve, I've been over there with Mike, and we've thought about it a lot. And it's not an easy decision necessarily. But in again, I I my opinion is I'd rather do something with our own campus. Be able to improve our own campus and bring back the vitality and be able to do something that have a building that's a forty-year-old building, knowing that we're probably going to spend five million dollars and probably more in the future with the firm. That's my opinion.
And we could control our own ne- uh neighborhood with what this is. I I do think as we get in the bid process, though, we need to really look at the the cost. It's still a lot of money, you know, eight-year, ten-year payout. It's something that we need to really consider, but that doesn't take into account the workforce program that we might get by re having the Air Force building and the Calhoun building either.
Yeah, I think again tonight, you know, I I want to emphasize these costs are estimated costs. And what we you have to do is up in the next two or three months, really dig down into details of getting of getting a true cost uh of what it would be to be able to do this. But tonight, really, all we need to do is make a decision often.
Well, I got one question, one other question, I'm sorry. You mentioned before that if we embark in in the campus renovation, there is a plan B that college has in case we're not quite finished.
I wasn't going to bring that up, Steve, but there is a plan B. If if for some reason that we decide to do the Palestine campus and we have a uh we have a a problem with getting it getting a renovation done like we did with the Health Science Center. Uh, it takes twice as long as we thought it was going to. Uh, then there is a plan B to where we could do some things uh to temporarily, very temporarily to to move them out of where they currently are at the Palestinian Workforce Center and put them on our campus temporarily, very temporarily. They're they're not going to have a, they're not going to have a facility, of course, but we could, we could temporarily. If it comes down to. That's plan B.
All right, and I guess they're okay with that.
Yeah, they're okay with plan B. Yeah, go ahead, Dre, you you know.
I was going to say about plan B. So if um the plan B is simply the gymnasium, sorry, if the multipurpose facility is that built at the time, then we do have the option of moving those particular uh individuals to where our EMT is to be located. So that is a space in which Major Vandertoon mentioned that it would be a perfect location for them to temporarily house their uh exercise and and various things. So so that space would be very easy for them to.
We have to knock down a wall, I think, between two.
Relatively inexpensive as far as.
Thank you. So I guess we need a motion to move.
Does anybody else have anything else? Are you loose motions or?
I'll make that much.
May, uh, trustee Henry.
Would like to say that I think that the on-campus solution is going to go. And if we can specifically eliminate a further discussion about the the present location. Um, and then going a step further, there are many questions regarding these costs that we still have, so I sure want to reserve an opportunity to have that discussion about those. All of it, but it seems to me that option one and two don't accomplish an important component, which we very much wanted to, that is to showcase TDCJ. Option three has the visibility from of the theater. And to me, why build this nice building, put it in the backyard where the campus still looks just about like it did before? Versus on the south end so that it shows.
That's a very good point. Hadn't really thought about.
You know, I I was, I was there Saturday and and I was saying I don't remember the well, it didn't appear to be an environment there anymore than than what we have to do, but I I would don't sure whether to see us being able to show this is new, this is bigger, this, you know, things are opening up down here and you couple that with 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 new parking, et cetera. That second entrance, I'm really wondering about how much money and how necessary that is versus doing something, maybe expand the one that we have, but but those are things I guess we'll have an opportunity to talk about. Certainly, I would like to to discharge the further discussion about the existing location and commit it to a an on-campus solution for reasons everybody's.
That's a good thought, Dave. Uh, Corey, can I ask a question? That that elevations of uh plan three over there to the south, isn't that flatter than the other two? I mean, is.
So we focused on one and two, uh due to some conversations, uh I believe, Major might have had some concerns of being close proximity of Calhoun where some of his activities would take place, I believe, as well.
That's right.
And that's why we focused on initially one, and then we looked at two. And then Dr. King directed us to look at all possible locations. And that's when we looked at three and that's. That's why we focused on two. Yeah, very good point. It it is.
And it was the least expensive.
That was a reason why I wanted to as well because.
We want our EDC partner to be able to stand all the way down there.
That's right.
We want what's best for TDCJ. If you look at the blue space, the A, there's much more parking uh accessible for option two and one as well. So if you were looking at option three, you're 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 correct, trustee Monk, that that is more visible and 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 you're correct. However, the parking is is such more uh available spaces within that region.
We actually also looked at extending that parking lot that Dre was talking about to the north as well. You have to expand that parking lot. If you do grow out from option one or two, you do have options.
Okay, further discussion? We've had a motion made and seconded to approve this site and work exclusively with this site. You know, here, let's the show hands, please. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, going a lot of favor. Aye, is that, okay?
The uh Palestinian town council program, we have to give it up.
We, January first of twenty twenty-five, we're out. Yeah, twenty-five. So we got a year, yeah.
Mike, I think we don't want be dragging our feet on the construction here. Missed out on the all of the training, but.
You remember how how it was with the Health Science Center in Terrell. We thought we could do it in nine months and it took eighteen, so. Yeah, I think it's going to have to be something that's going to have to be started quickly.
Uh, next item, item number eight, considering discussed room and board rates for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
I'm going to let Dr. Parnell explain that.
Thank you, Dr. King and I mean, four members. Um, a much less weighty issue than the last one. We do this every year. We come to you and we ask for an increase so that air market can reach our issue in the most efficient way. Um, this year, they asked us for an eight, nine, or ten percent increase, and that was after a ninety percent increase last year. I I feel that's way too much. And so we came back and we countered with a three and a half percent offer and they and they think they took that. And that is what we list in our contract with them as a normal rate of increase per year. And so uh that's that's what we would normally do on a regular year. I know we missed a couple of years in the past where we didn't increase at all. Um, but this year, we are asking for uh three and a half percent increase. Now, in addition to that, I'm not asking for any sort of an increase in the housing costs. If you remember from last year, we actually increased the cost of both housing and dining combined by about seventeen and a half to eighteen percent. And so I'm not trying, I don't want to raise housing costs this year because I don't want to price ourselves out of the market right now. Uh, and we'll look at that again next year and see if we need to do anything further with that to stay in line with what the rest of the city is is doing. Uh, and also we'll look at what students can actually afford. Uh, but this year, all we're asking for is that three and a half percent increase for for air market.
Trustee must move to follow that. Trustee still with proven, all in favor? Move some path. Discuss Terrell radio station.
I know how much you guys like like talking about radio station, so I thought I'd bring it back up again. Um, I did, I did have a good conversation with Ray Dunlop about two or three months ago uh and did tell him that we were not even getting owning a radio station. Uh, and so he's come up with another idea. Uh, his other idea, I, he wants the radio station in Terrell, so uh, by the way, I did talk to uh to Dr. Morrison earlier today and I I think he's going to be able to help us with this radio station thing. I he he he's been involved with the radio station before and they have a radio station, nonprofit uh, it's Southern Arkansas Tech, and so uh, but we we may be able to get some guidance from Dr. Morrison uh on this radio station thing. But I, we don't, we don't own it, we won't own it, but they they're now interested in devising a way where the Chamber of Commerce can actually purchase the radio station. I think it's the Economic Development Corporation purchasing it for the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, but they're going to, I think that's what they're looking at. They're talking to attorneys now, trying to determine how they can make that work. What they are interested in doing is having TBCC and Terrell ISD uh jointly work together and develop a a program to where we could have students that would be involved in operation of the station. And um, I don't know any details. Uh, I think Ray's still stretching out there a little bit, trying to make this happen. And maybe he can, maybe he can't. If anybody can make it happen, Ray Dunlop probably can. But um, we we, I just wanted to bring it up. He's probably going to come back to us again at some point with a proposal, not for us to own it, but for us to be involved in the operation in some capacity. And we don't have a a broadcasting radio program now, but it's a possibility. We we could do that. We've looked at it. Kelly's looked at it in the past. There's some potential there for us to do that. We looked at Terrell, Terrell ISD, they uh this last year, they had seventy-nine students enrolled in audiovisual pathways, which is broadcasting. So if we can work with Terrell High School and we can do something with them and have an articulation agreement here and work with them, then this may work. But that's, I I just wanted to bring it up because I told Ray that I would. And I would also tell him that we're not, I told, I've been telling to tell, he told me to tell you that he appreciates whatever uh work that we could work together. Anybody have any questions about radios? If you do talk to Dr. Morrison, he's the radio, he's the radio station guy, not me.
Possibly have no legal or other identifiable obligation pertaining ownership operation. I I'll say this, that's.
Yeah, I think so, and we'll just have to wait and see what he comes up with.
Or programs to be offered, et cetera. Just as long as we're not. It's still, until he needs to try.
I think that's where we're headed and we'll just kind of wait and see what he comes up with. And uh, we'll, we'll just, you know, do what we need to do. We talked about putting in a program six months ago or nine months ago, whenever it was, all this came up last summer, I think. And uh, so I mean, it's very, it's taken us a year to do it. I told Ray it'd take us a year to put a program in. But I mean, it's something that we could probably bring in some students. You know, I told him, if I if I were nineteen years old, I probably would want to be in a a class where I could be on the radio station. You know, you know, I think there's probably some interest in that, but students. So I think it would bring some interest to the program. Dre, what do you think?
Um, sure.
Yeah, there you go.
Radio station and uh it worked very well uh for the first year or two, and then uh we let some people take reins on it and had to take it back, so.
Okay, well, we'll work it, we'll work out however we we can end it. We feel like it's in our best interest, but all we would be doing is having a program. We would have no ownership or no legal responsibility.
Good price.
It's a good price, yeah.
Uh, all right, the next item is item number ten, discuss Department of Education review.
No, we've been talking about this for a long time and we were able to finally finalize the program review response. I think hopefully you've had an opportunity to look over that. I think uh Dr. Parnell and David Hopkins and Tanya and many other people were involved in that did a great job. I I I truly believe that Blue Icon Advisors was a great uh opportunity for us to work with somebody that knew, had done this before and had been through it before. So now all we're doing, we send it to them, we're waiting on their response. That could be next month, it could be six months from now, it could be a year from now. Uh, who, we don't know. And then once they give us their response, then we'll have the opportunity to respond back to them. So there's, it's this, that we're in the first beginning stages of the process and um I think, I think we've done the best that we could to be upfront, honest. Tell it like it was scenario and uh I think that what what happened seven years ago, six years ago, whatever long ago, that's not going to happen today. And it hasn't happened since Tanya's been there and hasn't happened in the last uh, we're we're on a, we're doing things around. All I can say. Y'all have anything to add?
I would, I just to parrot what you said, they worked very hard in the financial aid office to get us from the point we were in those years ago to get us to now where we've gone through two independent reviews of our of our student files and they found no serious errors whatsoever. And they're finding minor things like you will always find, but no serious errors. And that that makes me feel confident that we are on the right track. Now, I do want to make, let you know that I I do plan to continue to use um the our consultant to continue to train our folks in in even more subject matter and so that they can keep ahead of everything that might come up that's due. But I see, I see no, no issues moving forward right now. I think we've done everything we can at this point to ameliorate the problems we had before and I think we're sitting with it ready.
Dr. Parnell, as I understand it, if if the input goes in wrong, our new computer program will tell us, it will, will let us submit it now.
Yeah, some cases that is true. In some cases that is true. Uh, it won't let us, but it won't let us do the wrong thing. Not in every case, I mean, nothing's but if, but in some cases, that's greater.
It won't let us calculate it, Paul.
Correct.
Dr. Parnell, this is a real versus number. Still looks like four million.
I think the number we came up with is four million, eight thousand, seven thousand. Four billion, seven. Four million seventy-seven thousand.
I when I was proofing it, I verified that. Well, look, it's for me.
And I think that's the number we gave you last time when we added up all the parts of the right time before.
Is that worst case?
It's it's worst case as far as the principal that we can see that we could possibly owe back.
But it's not.
Yeah, that means the penalty isn't interesting, things like that, but it's the worst case of of what we can get back. Now, some of the, I mean, we could. Certainly, I think make this better potentially. Uh, and that's what we'll shoot for is to make it make it not be. Not be the four million dollars, but something less than that. Thank you.
It was just a discussion. There's no action on it, so.
Uh, if you want for the comments, uh, we need to visit about the fire suppression system in Northwest Door.
I think you remember last summer when we were renovating Northwest Door. We did, by the way, they did a great job. Tony Buford, thank you and and all that group that was involved in that. Uh, if if you go over and walk in one of those dorms, it looks like you're walking into a brand new facility. I know it doesn't. I mean, they didn't change the outside that much, but still it it does. I'm getting all kinds of compliments from football players. Used to when we when we brought recruits on campus, we hit them. We hit the we hit the door from. We didn't want them to go see the door. Now we do, and the parents, we want the parents to go see. So it's great. But what and what we did, we were required to put in a fire um alarm. That was part of the requirement, city requirement, but we weren't required to put in a fire sprinkler system. And so we didn't really start talking about that till kind of close to the end. And so um we had brought it up tonight. We've been talking about it really since the end of last summer. Uh, we have, we have two dorms. We have northeast dorm and we have Cardinal Hall that already has. A fire alarm system and a sprinkler system. We have two dorms over here, uh, west and south, yeah, west and south. Sometimes I get my directions confused, but uh they do not. So we they, you know, this this we'd still have two dorms that does not have a sprinkler system. So I just wanted to bring it up again tonight. We had two bids. We had two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven from Pi Barker. Fire and safety, which does a a lot of our work that we have done on our campus regarding sprinkler system regarding uh. Fire alarms and things of that nature. Don't we have a contract with them? Uh, I believe we do. Yeah. Then we have another bid from RES Fire Sprinkler for one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty. There was a little initially when we were talking about it last summer, I think it was in the one twenty ballpark. And they there's there's some additional requirements that's that's been required. I think the city. Was going to require some additional things that we they weren't aware of or we weren't aware of. And so it's added to that. Probably the cost has gone up in other ways as well, but it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty.
Okay, we have, we have two that have suppression and we have two that don't.
That's right.
Okay, this those dorms as well as this one, you ever say one or two?
No, it's the third.
Okay, it's third. So are we fully compliant with all? Local state, whatever. Uh, regulations regarding safety requirements and as it sits and as the others sit. So we're not hard pressed to. Spend a hundred and seventy-one thousand or two hundred. What do you think?
Are we hard pressed? No. No, it's not. It's not required, but it's.
It's the building. Can I?
Yeah, please do. Yeah.
The building's fifty thousand square feet. And if you were building it new, current city codes, if if it's a building over. Depending on the use, if it's in some cases, six thousand feet, but a lot of times it's twelve. This is a residence hall of fifty thousand feet. It becomes a. A safety hazard. At the time, we were thinking of this and brought it back up back last summer when we were thinking about getting bids in the fall. Uh, it just became apparent. To us looking at it that you have a new facility in something that. You know, they 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 were able to keep it under the code, but what they did. It's an extra safety hat feature for the building. That's mainly what it is. We were choosing. Safe, I mean, you know, just caution over over anything else.
Uh, so what do you think?
I think we should do it. I mean, it. Yeah, uh. You know, it's it's okay until you got a problem. And and I just, I I truly. Uh, I mean, you know, I mean, I I, you know, if somebody and I, you know, the other two dorms aren't. You know, they're in our estimate. I certainly live in it, but it looks like it did when I was going to school there back in nineteen seventy-something. And but they're but they're clean and and they're in good shape. But I'd I'd recommend on all of them as we move forward, if we look down the road and 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 projects to be done in the future. Uh, I I think it makes some sense to do that. Um. We're fortunate. We haven't had. Serious problems with this before, but. One could happen and. Uh, but that's just my opinion. I. It's it's something that's being made just it is is a point of caution. Uh, but you know, we got we got fifty, you got many kids in a fifty thousand square foot facility. You know, we're fortunate. We don't have a problem.
We got, we got a hundred kids and.
Yeah.
They do have an outside door, which is which is helpful. But uh they can still get a hundred kids.
And and we if we, what we did do, we put. Uh, a system in there where if there is a fire, it 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 not just goes off in the room, it'll ring a. Pretend, you know, fire department and they'll, you know, a signal will go out to for fire department to come.
That's just the alarm system.
That's just the alarm system. We didn't have that before.
And yeah, I guess where I know with that is is that is that we're saying this, this is an important safety issue. Um, and I don't know if we're in a building that's trapped right now, but um. But my point is, is that if that's the case, then. How can we not be as um as um stimulated, if you will, to do those other two dorms? I have kids in it too.
I I agree.
We we, Tony, I think we talked about having someone come over and give us an estimate of what it would cost. We have we done, we have not done that yet.
Yeah, but we'll go a step further with that. You know, we're 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 all talking about safety and I understand. Yeah, it's also a key emotional touch of one is that is the property should be. But do any of us have anything that that's uh statistically significant or 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 telling in terms of. Does fire suppression really add to? Life saving or is it fire alarm? Because you don't care about the building. You get you get the lives to save. If we have anything, you know, again, we're focusing on the emotional part. It's we're really moving. If it's safety. Is it really a safety thing? Or is the fire alarming? This is the real safety. And I don't know. I'd uh, so wouldn't it be worth looking at before we do that? Because if we do this one. Aren't we just as compelled then to say, well, we just gotta find a way to go and do those other? It's just something to think about.
Yeah.
And and I don't know the answer to that.
That that that's a good question. I think both of them are important. I mean, I. You know, the building's block and brick. Uh, but on the other hand, if you have. You know, we have insurance. If if fire broke out in there, it was bad enough that would that would cause it to be torn down. I mean, last year, what did we spend on that project?
Two point two.
Two million dollars. Yeah, two point one.
Which we're we're it hadn't been touched since the early eighties. And you know, I guess my point is building standards have changed. We're probably able to dodge some of that stuff because of the age of it. And pre-existing and and how we went about the construction itself.
I'm I'm not against it. I'm I'm just saying, let's question why we really think this is so important. If we think it's so important because we perceive it was all about safety. But yet you don't have anything to support knowledge that it adds to safety beyond a good. Fire alarming and the engine system.
Well, and and of course, it it would be as much that that much savings, but it should be a fa- a fairly decent savings on your insurance bill, I would think. So do we, what do we want to do? Do we want to? Come to the decision tonight to uh do this? If if I, as I understand, is if we do this. It will be um uh done during the um summer.
Yeah, we could, we could table it if that's something you wanted to do and talk about it at the April twenty-fourth for meeting.
Yeah, well, the day out there, all that kind of stuff. I'm sure it's been measured since Sunday. It it and it may fully support, it'll answer your question or whatever the other, I'm sure.
Be happy to do that. I I I'll get somebody to do it.
Tony.
We we will do that if you'd like for us to and table it anyway. If we do it in April, Board B, you have time.
Yeah, that's right.
To to do it in the summer. If you wait much later than April, then you're you're gonna run into some time issues. Yeah, we can do that. We need to.
But honestly, if I have time, I I've never heard a story told about all the lives that were saved because of the fire suppression system. I have heard several and even witnessed a couple. Uh, wet buildings where important things got flooded because of our thing now. Shouldn't have been a bad. I don't know.
We'll look into that and we'll move um.
What we could do.
We'll just tape it to next. Is that, will you make that motion, Dr.? Second, second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor? Uh, as having. Okay, next deal, consider and discuss vacancy for Board of Trustees District Two.
For this would be the vacancy that Ray Raymond has had left and in in that district. And I I I'm assuming you want to do it like we've done the last two. Where we where we've uh had nominations for uh board members to. To be on a, I guess a nominating committee. I'm not sure the title, but nominating committee and usually it was three board members. Could be anybody that wants to, I guess, doesn't matter. Uh, and they would be uh. We we'll advertise and Janine, you've done a good job of that. The last couple of uh times we've had these vacancies and. We'll put it out on social media and we'll ask people to send their uh resumes and information about themselves. We'll let these three board members uh interview them and let them look over their uh their uh resumes and then um. If that's what you want to do, they can come back and make a a recommendation to the full board. And the full board can vote on whoever that uh the member that they.
She's calling fast practice. Those are all around. Apparently, they're in the territory and those people, I think that would suggest that. First, Ron Day and Dr. Eason and Charlie Russing will be the, you know. The the right votes to to figure that out. But that was a nomination.
Very second. Trustee Henry seconded, all in favor? Uh, who opposed?
Okay, y'all have a good job.
Okay, uh, consider um. And discuss, let's see here, consider and discuss election of Board trustee officers due to resignation.
Since um uh Ray Raymond was the president of the board. We need to have, uh, according to our board policy, we need to have a uh. A election tonight. Uh, I guess it doesn't have to be tonight, but it could be uh where we would elect a new president. Uh, of the board. So at this time, we would uh. I I guess have discussion regarding.
Do we have any discussion or any motion?
I like Norman, right?
That wouldn't be me. I'm out of here.
Steve Grant.
Okay, so we have a nomination and we have a Steve Grant. We have a second. Or we have any discussion?
Good choice.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passed. Steve being the current vice president then, we need to have an election or we need to have some discussion about vice president. Since you're moving into the president's position. Uh, so we can do that tonight, or we can do that at the next meeting, whatever. You would choose to do, Mr. President.
I'd make a motion for trustee Henry to nominate.
Okay, so we have a motion that that Mike Henry being nominated as the vice president of the board. We have a second. You have a second over here at Norman?
I got it.
We have any discussion regarding that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I don't know why I'm conducting the meeting. You should be conducting.
We got more practice than I have.
It's your turn now.
Well, I'll just say this. I'll say it. Personal interest in part of it. Okay, uh, if they're considering discuss personnel updates.
There, we didn't have that many yet. I'm kind of surprised. We we've had quite a few the last few months, though. Thank you, Janine, for not putting that many down there. I was kind of beginning to wonder the last few months, we've had a considerable amount, but we didn't have that many, but we did have a few resignations. We had a few re uh new hires and a reclassification that was required for us to do. Anybody have any questions regarding personnel matters? If not, we would ask for some move through approval.
Now here, uh, motion to approve those. Right here, Dr. Eason, the motion's approved. You make a second on improving personnel.
So.
For trustee Marks.
Before we leave, I'd like to, I I should have done this at the beginning. I want to reintroduce and to to raise your hand or whatever, Dr. Dyson Morrison. He's gonna be sitting here. He's gonna be sitting here. Uh, so thank you for coming. Thank you for coming tonight. We had a good conversation and he's staying inside and we'll we'll continue working together. So I think May first is his official start date and uh uh May thirty-first is my official end date. So we'll be working together for the month of May and make this work, but he's gonna be in charge. He will be running this show during when he starts May first. And I'll be there on advisory capacity. That sound good? It does to me. That RV that my wife is looking at sounds even better.
Uh, Dr. Charlie's not here, but does somebody want to do the honors to adjourn? Trustee Day. Trustee Stone seconded, all in favor? Uh. Thank you all.
Thank you.